Good morning, everybody. I apologize. We ran a little bit late. We're in a non meeting. We're a non meeting, so. But we're here now, so. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. I'll have a person.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the June eighth, twenty twenty-three Rockingham County Pejumis meeting. Start with attendance on Zoom. We've got Sarah, Catherine Mann, Paris Office, we have Jason Smith, Duke Gates, Jason Henry, Kathy Stacy, and that's it in Zoom that I see right now. In the room, we have Chuck Nickerson, Allison Kepakowski, Layla McTea. We have our Commissioner Godu, Commissioner Foyle, and myself. So we're gonna start with RFP openings for King and Kitchen Long-Term Care Facility.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services to review evaluation proposals and return with a recommendation.
Sorry, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're onto consent agenda.
I move to approve the June first, twenty twenty-three, public and non-public minimums.
Second, motion been made and seconded. Are there any additions and fractions in those minutes? Not on the on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
Vote yes. Surplus equipment request.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight, eight, colon, eight, A, and declare a pair of chapel speakers from the Department of Corrections surplus with the items to be disposed of.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Surplus equipment request.
And I move to approve a surplus request pursuant to me after RSA twenty-eight, eight, A, and if there's a fridge or refrigerator from the Finance Office surplus with the items to be disposed of.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just don't buy from empty voters. Didn't last very long.
Further discussion?
Presser.
If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And Attorney Conway is on the way.
Okay, great.
So.
Surplus equipment request number three.
I move to approve a surplus request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight, eight, A, and declare six scales and six fire lifts from long-term care services surplus with items to be disposed of.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Oh, did I? I thought I did. I not say two. It's two fire lifts in case I mistake.
So any discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Want the payroll?
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for the period ending June third, twenty twenty-three.
The motion on the floor, seconded. Discussion. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, reports. I'm gonna go with Commissioner Foyle.
The jail population is at one fifty, inching up a little bit. We anticipate it will end up more as the summer progresses. They have no COVID, and the shower project's continuing along well. Otherwise, things are progressing smoothly. With respect to finance, last night, we had the Executive Committee Public Hearing that went very smoothly. No one showed up. It was not well-attended in terms of the public, but everything went well, and we have you're now scheduled for June twenty-first for the public hearing. Long-term care, their chief staff members tested positive for COVID this week. The no changes to the infection control policy, the assisted living community is COVID-free. And Polaris Group is onsite this week for the mob survey. That we use that feedback to help get us prepared for get us prepared for the actual survey by state, so I think it's a really valuable tool. And the magic tables got installed, and so the residents are using those. They're really cool, so. And that's about it.
The other thing I have to report is that I had a wonderful tour of the Rockingham County Correctional Facility yesterday. It was an enlightening and eye-opening experience. I officially did the inspection, which found everything to be in order. The decor is not as nice as my house, but I suppose that's to be expected.
Thank you for doing that. I typically do that every, but I appreciate that you got the tour in. Signed off on that, and so thank you for doing that.
I have never seen the inside of a jail before, and so I have a perspective of what they're up against.
And comparatively, Rockingham is a really, really nice facility. It's really well-kept, well-cared-for. Having spent a lot of time in many different jails, I can tell you comparatively across the county.
That's a nice place.
It's quite nice, yeah. And I don't mean it. I don't say that casually.
Anything for other commissioners?
No, that's it.
For the record, we got Pat Conway, our attorney, as well. I'll just echo. The only thing that I really had was, you know, we attended the executive committees, delegations budget as well. I thought it was really well-attended, number one. Number two, I think that the story that we had told them about about the budget, Ken Wiley did a fantastic job summarizing the whole process. He did give kudos to, many kudos to our department heads that put that budget together, and I just want to thank everybody for their hard work. It means a lot when you when you get a unanimous vote. And it just shows a lot of trust between the delegation and the commissioners and the department. So thank you very much for everybody's hard work, and that's all I have. So let's go on to line item transfer department corrections.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars dated May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, transferring from inmates at other facilities to jail meals as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second, motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion, Commissioner Foyle?
Jason, how do you think this puts you for the rest of your both in the, obviously, in meals and in and for like outside transfer?
As for this year's budget, they should cover everything. We should be just fine. And I worked with Chuck with this. I could tell you that the meals line, that we actually increased the meals line for next year because of someone has to do with the labor over at Glendale. And someone with a more religious meals. Beginning of the year, and Chuck going this a little more, we're gonna sit down and talk with, I guess, Chuck and Jason and kind of figure this out with Glendale of where we're at, because I know Jason had some issues with his meals going up as well, too, so we're gonna try to get to figure out what's going on, but I had a lot of conversations with Chuck.
And what's going on with the halal meals? Isn't there?
They, well, we had a lot more halal meals than we ever had in the past, so. I think so. Some of this is bad since we actually have a a religious person here that's in charge of stuff knows what they're doing. I think in the past, it may have been religious meals weren't necessarily a done very well here. And that is one of the top lawsuits there is out there is on your religious meals, those kinds of things, so we were a little behind at times compared to what other places are already doing, and everyone knows there's a case law called Rupla, which is why the religious stuff, well, we have to do this in this some. So we're following now what needs to be done, so we won't have any issues. So it does cost more, and that that's just one of the meals. I talked to Commissioner Godu yesterday, letting know there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of other meals and religious stuff that we have to do that keeps you out of the limelight, and so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, a further question? I just have one question for you, Jason. I understand the jail meal situation. My concern is, is the inmates at other facilities that are mom. How does that affect your budget? Will that be a problem down? Will we have plenty of money in that line?
Nope, plenty of money. We're good.
Okay, very good. So let's get back to on the motion. Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Inmate administrative transfer pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty dash B, colon, twenty-one.
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated June fifth, twenty twenty-three, transferring an inmate to and receiving an inmate from Hillsborough County Department of Corrections pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty dash B, colon, twenty-one, as recommended by the Superintendent.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Walk-in administrative transfer.
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer also dated June seventh, twenty twenty-three, transferring an inmate to Stratford County Department of Corrections pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty dash B, twenty-one, as recommended by the Superintendent of Department of Corrections.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're onto engineering and maintenance, IT services.
I move to approve the bid waiver request in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars per service performed on the jail air handling units as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Motion's been made. Wait a second. Second, seconded. Any discussion?
Hopefully, we won't be having these issues soon enough in terms of if we can raise the limit on the ten thousand.
Yeah.
And it's just barely over, and seems to, I'm glad it can get fixed.
So on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Finance office. Looks like this, we just need to sign the fiscal year in S thirty-six, which is due. If there's more than necessary, now we're onto Human Resources. Let's continue employee travel guidance policy.
I move to discontinue the employee travel guidance policy effective June eighth, twenty twenty-three. It's recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Great progress. Another step in the right direction in terms of reducing restrictions, and it's nice to see that progress.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Updated mask-wearing protocol.
I move to approve the updated mask-wearing protocol effective June eighth, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Motion's been made. Wait a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Now we want to long-term care, health for all heritage.
I move to approve the Health Pro Heritage Healthy Living Wellness Program Amendment and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. But your pharmacy services.
So do we want to have?
It was originally just a discussion only, but changed to.
You want to start the discussion part. Why don't we start with the discussion and then?
Well, why don't we make a motion then, this discussion?
I move to approve two bid waiver requests for health direct pharmacy services in the amount of five thousand and one hundred and seventy-five thousand for a three-year contract beginning September first, twenty twenty-three through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, and I know it's in discussion, so I'll open it up.
So. I guess here's some, and like, maybe we can give some background about why we're moving to where we are, just for the public and for transparency, and why this is a bid waiver in such a high amount, which is put out a bid for, or Jason, would you like to? I mean, I'm happy to do it.
Please feel free, Commissioner. I can chime in as well.
Okay, so we had a contract with Farm America. We had put this out to bid not too long ago. We are having, we were having some problems with some of the medications, and so, and part of the reason we moved, we chose Farm America in the last bid process was because, and I don't think this probably was before you were here.
Yeah.
So I'm sure you probably already had a chance to speak with Jason, but it's good for, okay, so that we we chose them because they were able to get things seamlessly, you know, transitioned from our last pharmacy provider. Because of all these issues, there's been an agreement just part ways, and this pharmacy was, you know, was had originally bid and were very competitive. We could have been gone with them originally, but it seems like they are able to start the, they're able to start us up at the beginning of September, so we are able to transition effectively for our residents, and it didn't seem to make sense to me, and I think Jason spoke to you guys as well, that we, you know, moved forward with that, with a bid waiver because it was bid so recently.
Yeah, you're correct, Commissioner. So I wanted to have a conversation with you, and depending on how the conversation went, the bid waivers were developed to see if we would move forward to that direction, but when we started this whole process, we contracted with Partners Pharmacy. Partners Pharmacy closed several locations in New Hampshire, and thus they closed their pharmacy in New Hampshire. We were not able to get credit for all the medications that are returned. In the state of New Hampshire, there's different regulations than Massachusetts. So when medications are not used, they're returned, and we get partial credit. When the pharmacy closed in New Hampshire, they were now in Massachusetts, and so when we returned medication, we would not, no longer eligible for credit on medications. When we went out to RFP, it was really important that we selected a New Hampshire pharmacy that had location here, so we can receive some reimbursement for medications. When we did that, we received two bids. Unfortunately, at that time, Health Direct, which was the first option that I wanted to choose, just due to the fact of their services, they came in and did monthly vaccination for us. They're just have a wonderful, outstanding reputation with here in New Hampshire as a long-term care pharmacy provider. The unfortunate part was that they were not able to set up service right away. Partners was canceling our contract due to their own issues, and at that time, they needed a thirty-day health drive, excuse me, direct, and Farm America was able to step in place. Since that contract is established, there are numerous and ongoing issues that if my nursing staff does not catch, could end up in neglect and could have some really significant errors, medication errors, that could result in death or hospital transfer. And I'm not joking with this, in the fact that some of these medication errors are absolutely horrific, where in fact, we were reporting them to the pharmacy for the state of New Hampshire to complain about their services, where the back of the bingo cards where medications are falling out, and there's just stacks and pills hanging on the medical card that we don't know who they belong to. They're sending the wrong medications to the wrong residents, the wrong dosage. It just goes on and on and on. Delay in receiving medications, and due to these ongoing issues and calling them to task, they have agreed to cancel our contract. This has taken so much time from the nursing staff to deal with these issues, being on hold for hours, trying to get in touch with the pharmacist. It just, it's very frustrating. With that, I would like to propose that we go with Health Direct, as you can see, and memo to you regarding the bid waiver, most of the county nursing homes have selected them, and they go with them. I can tell you that Coas County has Farm America, and they're also dealing with the same issues and struggles as well, and they want to switch. So with that being said, I am asking for agreement to accept the bid waiver with your permission. Otherwise, we will have to go to RFP, and that's a thirty-day process, and then we'll have to negotiate contracting, and then it just will extend a longer period of time, and I'm just worried that we will do harm to our residents.
Just one more thing. Jason, how does this put you with your budget? Are we okay in terms of comparative contract prices?
Yes, yes.
And then, thank you, I mean, in all the detail, thank you for all your efforts to document it, all the issues, because I think that helped. You know, really, that's what helped us get to where we are right now, to be able to switch providers and do the best for our residents, so thank you for all your efforts to document it and work with. We will to get to this point.
Thank you. I'm just gonna add that a five-star long-term care facility deserves much better service than what we're getting. And I want to thank Jason for looking out after. I mean, that's just inexcusable. Some of these scenarios that we're dealing with, medications that people require, so I have no problem. I will be supportive. So any other questions? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sheriff's Office, bid waiver.
Yes.
Central Square Technology.
I move to approve a bid waiver request for Central Square Technologies, a sole source or support provider of the Tri-Tech IMC performance software in the amount of thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars and sixty-five cents for the annual support fees for the period of July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the High Show.
Second, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, we're department head updates, and now go to the sheriff before we just talk about this. So sheriff. Good morning.
Good morning. I just want to thank all three of you commissioners for picking up my phone call yesterday on Jason Henry and I switching cars. Appreciate the support that all three of you do for the sheriff's office, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Now go to Drew Gates. Morning, Drew.
Good morning. All's well. Things are moving right along. We had a site visit yesterday for engineering services for the HVAC project. You might recall, we have four million dollars set aside in Aqua Funds, and we've had abysmal response from the HVAC mechanics, so we've backed it up one more step, and we're gonna do the engineering first. Everyone understands time is of the essence. I was pleased that we had three really well-qualified firms show up with really good questions, so I'm feeling hopeful that that project is going to go forward. I'm still reviewing the water wastewater evaluation report that came through last week. I and my water and wastewater chiefs are still going through the report. It was about ten months late, and so some of the information in it is maybe not up to date from things that have been happening since then, so we're having a little bit of trouble plodding through it, but they had staffing issues, partway through, lost a lot of their a lot of their company left, or their subs, their mechanical subs were unavailable, et cetera, so we're still trying to kind of dig our way through that. The shower project is progressing very nicely down at the jail. They expect to have the blockwork completed tomorrow. And after a cure time, the epoxy will be sprayed on, and then we'll move over to the other, the other side of AB, so that's coming along very nicely. They're supposed to be putting in the panic buttons, the ten panic buttons that we contracted with Honeywell. The wiring for that is supposed to start next week. So things are continuing along all as well.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Jason Henry. Superintendent.
Good morning, everybody. I reiterate, same thing with the sheriff's department. Thank you for picking up as we do the cruiser swap. I'll just let you know, last week, we continue with our monthly meetings with the sheriff's department command staff to keep open lines of communication as we, you know, transports, issues. Everything we've had going on here, so that's been very helpful. Next week, we have our NCCHC audit, which is the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. They come in, they'll audit all of our policies, procedures. They'll take random staff and talk to them, inmates, those kinds of things, so it's our audit, independent auditor on our medical stuff, which is, you know, it's the gold standard. Not every jail does this. We're one of the few that in New Hampshire does this, but it's been really helpful. We have to go to court and testify stuff, because they're right there with us. Beyond that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Jason Smith. Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. As Commissioner Foyle, we have mentioned, we have Polaris Group that is here. They are digging and digging, finding stuff, so I'm happy to say that things are looking well, finding a little, you know, recommendations here and there, and some life safety things, but, you know, we're always addressing all those things, so thank you, Drew, for all your assistance with that. Resident engagement, the magic table is up and running. We actually, we might have to install a curfew because the residents refuse to go to bed the other day.
That's awesome.
So we might have to set some hours on it. So. A lot of fun with it, so thank you so much for allowing that to happen. They truly appreciate. The new brochures have been published and printed, and you should have received a copy of them, so those are done, and we will be issuing those out during tours into the general market when we are doing admissions. Skills Fair continues. We are working on that and ensuring that our staff are meeting the requirement for all of our skill sets that are needed per federal regulation. In addition, we continue to raise money for the Alzheimer's Walk that will be held in October. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Jason. Gonna go to Kathy Stacy, but before you start, Kathy, I want to say that you were called out last night by one of the delegation members for your budget line. So kudos to you. I don't know if you heard already, but Representative Edwards called you out and was really happy to see what you provided for your budget, so take it away.
Well, that's very nice, but I know all of us have worked very hard on the budget, so everybody should be getting kudos, so. Anyway, thank you. The only thing I want to talk to you about pretty much is just to let you know that while you guys were on that meeting, I was with the Senate hearing because it was a real concern about the retirement, the amendment to House Bill Two that was put forth by the Democrats. Luckily, it did not succeed. It was a a ten to fourteen vote, but that would have cost about two hundred and forty-five million dollars if they changed, you know, if they reversed what happened in twenty eleven with the group. The, yeah, with the firemen and police, so we were very successful. I don't know what's gonna happen when it goes over the House. I've sent letters to both chambers from the Association of Counties, and we'll keep our fingers crossed, because quite honestly, that could have a huge effect on what, if it passes, what happens with our shared, meaning the employer share that would be increased moving forward for the next twenty years. So, you know, Joe, you know, we're working hard on that. Other than that, it's same old, same old here, and thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Kathy. I'm gonna go to Pat.
Hi, everybody. I stopped by. Sorry I didn't make the meeting last night. I've been dealing with a little bit of illness, not feeling great. Last night, I just wasn't feeling good, so I wasn't able to make it, so I apologize for that. I'm glad to hear it went well. Starting to feel better today, so I wanted to come by and just say hello to everybody and like, no, I'm still here, and things are going well in the office. I have been, you know, going in the office every day and working, even though I'm not, wasn't feeling great, but things are going well. We just hired one assistant county attorney, and we're working on, we promoted somebody from within to the lead attorney position as, because attorney Alice left. That's Caitlin Brown.
Yeah.
And she's well-deserving of it. She's done such a great job for us, and she's got about six years of prosecutorial experience, so I'm excited for her and for the office. I think she's gonna be a good supervisor for us, so that means we have another assistant county attorney position open. We've been talking to, and I think I mentioned this before, a woman from, I don't know if it's New Jersey or Pennsylvania, I can't remember off the top of my head, but she also has five or six years of experience prosecuting in the DA's office. Over Memorial Day, she visited family in Maine, so she actually came to the office, and we showed her around, and it looks really promising, so I'm really excited about that as well.
Did you tell about the new building?
I did, yes. So other than that, you know, things are going great. We're really busy, but chugging along and trying cases and successfully, so things are going good.
Awesome. Thanks, Pat.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna go to Alice.
Hi, we've been, so it's been kind of busy, annual open enrollment. We have about a hundred and sixty employees that have not completed the open enrollment, so I just want to make sure that ODDs and the office administrators are kind of asking their employees if they've completed it, but if they haven't, really encourage them to get on to the system, because they only have five days left to get it done. So please ensure that they do that. With the second round of acknowledgements for the personnel policies and procedures, we had a huge wave of employees that went back into the system, completed their We had a huge wave of employees that went back into the system, completed their acknowledgements. Um now we have fifty-two employees that did not, so letters will go into their file. Um we uh checked, uh excuse me, Jason Smith and I worked on the facilities use policy. We're going to get together and finalize. What we think to be like a final draft. Um I issued a childcare feasibility study meeting that will take place on June twenty-second. Twenty twenty-three, Thursday, after a board meeting in the Hilton Auditorium for the officials and division directors. Just as a first hit of a conversation about childcare and ideas around that that you may have from your staff. And then I just want to make sure, this, we're coming to year end, so there's so much going on, but evaluations, I need everybody's. About, everybody should have gotten an email, I think with the exception of the sheriff's office. Um evaluations all have to be in by June sixteenth. Everybody's has to be in, whether it's tied to financials or not, they need to, we need to account for them for the year end and get them into the personnel files. I will send the sheriff's office list over to them. I apologize for not getting it over to them. And we are gonna, I'm gonna be coming around with two boxes to each of the departments. Um for those employees to put in, whether they want Beats headphones, they can put it into both or Fitbits. Right now it's over in the long-term care up at the front main desk, so that it's there until Monday, so the weekenders have an opportunity to. Complete the little signature thing and get those in as well. Um I do want to ask um the NHAC awards, the deadline to submit for awards. Um and we want to have representation for each of the departments is next Friday. So assisted living employee of year, county attorney employee of the year, corrections employee of the year. County employee individual from anywhere in the county, county nursing home employee of the year, county sheriff employee of the year. County team award, registry of deeds and information technology employee. Um I've only heard from two folks so far in the county as far as potential recommendations for nominations. But we do want to be well-represented. Um um and I do, I would like to see some activity on that, so if you have any issues, call me, but. For the most part, if you could get those in um and make a copy of whatever you're submitting, so I know who's being nominated. Um and if you need a second nomination, we will work, I'll work within that county to get a second or third nomination in. Um as part of whoever you're nominating, but those are the awards and um. That's what I want to say about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Obviously busy with budget, yes. Uh last night's meeting went nice and smooth. Um hopefully the delegation meeting will as well. Um I guess this could almost be like a last call for my M transfers because. The executive committee does have a brief meeting that they hold before the delegation meeting on June twenty-first, so. Please departments scour your budget lines uh for any lines that look like they could be overspent by five thousand or more. Um at the end of the year because we'd rather get a uh my M transfer before the end of the year instead of trying to have an additional separate. Executive committee meeting in July.
Yeah.
Uh because we're not, you know, unless there's some other law that that we have to pay monies out regardless. Um we, you know, we need to have transfers approved by executive committee in place before. We overspend lines by five thousand or more, so just a reminder on that, so I'd say that next Thursday would be the, you know. The last BOC meeting for that and the sooner the better to know about those because I'd want to give the delegation coordinator a heads up. To get those transfers on the agenda.
Yeah.
So right now there's eight, I believe, transfers that the EC should be addressing. Uh in two weeks, so um and again, there's no shame in asking for. For a transfer, especially with how things have been during COVID, I mean, supply chain issues. Uh inflation as far as pressures on on different things. Um but again, please submit them. Um thank you for those departments have submitted uh write-off requests. Um because those need to get before the board as well, and I just take a quick review first before they go to the board. Um year-end preparation, uh we had a a brief. Um webinar, well, a brief in-person in Zoom um meeting as far as regarding year-end preparation. So we'll start can the year-end checklist out to different departments for what roles they play and. And together are six thirty, twenty-three numbers, so that hopefully the audit goes as smoothly as it can. And we can get our um our final numbers sooner than later. Um as far as MS forty-six form, that's really just the the commissioner's budget that you already approved. Just being converted over to the format that New Hampshire DRA requires, so that's why it was really for approval.
Right.
The BOC area.
It's just.
Yeah, yeah, just like, and there's an MS forty-two version that will be the delegation-approved budget to that. Um the clerk and the chair of the delegation have to prove that hopefully soon after uh June twenty-first. Um overall, just very busy with uh grants still. Um on a cash basis, we did get our five hundred eighty-four thousand per FEMA. Um I think that will, that'll definitely be it for this fiscal year, but um maybe we'll have a smaller, much smaller amount for next year. But uh again, lots of good, positive, actual revenue results for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Unfortunately, I don't think. Some of those will be around for twenty twenty-four, but um we'll take it.
While we can.
Yes, most, most definitely. Um again, this, the usual kind of crazy busy stuff.
Great, thank you, sir. Uh David, do you have anything?
Oh, no, nothing for me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh let's go to new business. Do you have any new business? No? All right. So it looks like I'm going to ask for public comment. I don't see anybody uh in the public. I will ask for public comments just in case there are. There's nobody from the public, so we're going to be going into non-public session. I wish everybody a good day today. And uh make it a great one.
Okay, um what's our name? Yeah, right, I was thinking, so.
All right, so anyway, the the regular meetings ended, so um.
No, it's not.
What you got?
We.
We have adjourned, we need to go to non-public.
Right, so, okay, I was just, so we're, well, I mean, I wonder if we're going to keep a, it would make sense to keep a recess now because. We're gonna go into non-public for an hour and a half. Hour.
Whatever you want to do.
I think.
Go into non-public and then recess.
Sure.
Dude, I mean, it.
Doesn't matter.
However you want to do it.
Okay. Um. I will, I will, I will to recess right now and then we'll enter non.
Motion for recess. All right, have a good day, everybody.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yeah, go back.
Right.
So to go into non-public.
Okay, so we've come out of recess, everybody, um and now we will be going into non-public and I'm going to allow Commissioner Coyle to. Make the motion.
I move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety-one A colon three.
Motion has been made, wait a second, seconded, all of us, there's a, I.
Hi.
Going into non-public. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Coyle?
We uh just came out of non-public and um I move to seal the minutes indefinitely because uh it could. Disclosure of the information could render a proposed action ineffective.
Motion been made, seconded, seconded, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, and then the last motion?
I move to adjourn.
Second, maybe adjourn, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.